Ms. Bragg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Swenson.
Here. Mayor Jurniel, did you have an addition you'd like to make to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Your Honor, we'd like to add Barbara Lavalure to the special presentations section of the agenda tonight. She has a brief presentation she'd like to make.
Okay, and based on that, do I have a motion for approval of the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Is there one who needs to pull something off of the consent agenda? Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. So, special recognitions. Barbara?
Thank you, Councilmember Swenson, and all of the rest of the council members for including us in the meeting this evening. My name is Barbara Lavalure. I'm Chair of Public Art Edina, and I'm thrilled to let you know, among the first to know, who the winners are for the 2014 People's Choice Award winners for our public art sculpture exhibit that we have annually. The installations occur in May, and the opening is in June, and we have a three-month period where people, anyone, can vote for their favorite sculpture, and we have a clear winner. And I would like to invite Nick Legaros to come up forward with me. I call Nick Edina's own, given he lives in Edina as well, and I'm proud to let you know that your sculpture, "Leaping Hair," was the first-place winner for the People's Choice Award.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. What that means is, first of all, it's a huge recognition for Nick's work, and also, he gets an additional $1,000 as an award, which is always nice for an artist.
Always good.
And he's invited to have his sculpture be shown for an additional year, as are the second and third-place winners. So, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thrilled for you.
Thank you.
And Barbara, for those maybe who haven't seen the sculpture yet, could you give the location, please?
Yes.
So that if they're watching tonight, and they're really excited, and they want to go out and see?
Absolutely. So, we have three locations. "Leaping Hair" by Nick is at Grandview Square, as is our third-place winner, which is "Argonaut" by James Bearden. That's also located at Grandview Square. And Grandview also hosts the first-place winner from last year, number nine, a life-size horse made of horseshoes. The second-place winner for this year's award goes to Jim Denny, who is a new sculpture to enter our competition. He's from Newton, Wisconsin. It's almost to Lake Michigan, and his sculpture is called "Dancing Sandhill Cranes," and it's located at 50th and Halifax. We do have some pictures of the three winners. It's on the back of the ballot, and so you can see the little picture. But the photographs are on the website, the city website, and I'm just really thrilled to be able to let you know, since you also help fund us and help pay our artists. So, thank you very much.
Well, we're very excited for your program. We know you work very hard on it, Barbara, so we appreciate all your hard work. And, Ms. Rokel, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing your sculpture for another year. So, if anyone wants to go see the first-place winner, it is at Grandview, right in front of the senior center, along with the horseshoe sculpture. Is there a third piece there?
"Argonaut" by James Bearden from Des Moines.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, Nick Legaros has a past, and I'm sure he's going to continue to have a future in putting beautiful sculptures in Edina. There's a fun sculpture of kids, maybe a couple of girls or a girl and boy playing in front of the pavilion at Centennial Lakes as well. So, beautiful, nicely done.
Great, thank you. And tonight, we'll have our first public hearing. It's a conditional use permit with variances. Director Teague?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This first item is located in the northwest corner of the city, in a residential area on Knoll Drive. As you see, the property, highlighted in blue, is located on a somewhat large pond. These homes sit quite a bit elevated above the pond. This is a site plan that you can see the steep slopes that go down to the pond. So, again, the house sits quite a bit higher than the pond. What the applicant is proposing here is to tear down the existing home and build a new one. Rendering of the new home is shown on the screen. The home design here, this neighborhood is characteristic of wide lots with a lot of ramblers, so they've designed this home to fit into the character of the neighborhood. You can see the two color pictures here. These are the homes on either side of the property that's to be torn down and rebuilt, and this is the home that would be located there. So, the request before you is a conditional use permit and a variance to the one-foot rule to raise the first floor of the proposed home more than one foot above the existing residence. The purpose of the request is to utilize the existing foundation, utilize that for the new construction. The existing ceiling height of, or the ceiling, the basement ceiling height of the existing home is just seven and a half feet, so they would like to raise that to eight feet, 10 inches. So, the coupling of that with modern construction practices, utilizing the existing foundation, is, causes that first-floor elevation to rise more than a foot above the existing home. So, the primary issue before the city council is, does the conditional use permit criteria met, and is the variance criteria met? Both staff and the planning commission believe that it does. Again, the purpose of the request is to utilize that existing low-floor elevation and then raise the ceiling height of the home to a more reasonable ceiling height for the new home. So, we believe that the proposed home is in character with the neighborhood, as demonstrated. You can see, they've designed a home to be rambler-style, to match the existing homes on either side, and fits in well with the neighborhood. The applicant has been working with our engineering staff in developing a grading and drainage plan that works for the site, and they have submitted a plan now that's satisfactory to the engineering department. Also, I wanted to mention that the maximum height of this home could be 40 feet tall, based on the width of the lot. The proposed height of the home here is 25 feet, and again, fits into the character of the neighborhood. There was some concern raised by the planning commission in regard to the process, and having variances to the conditional use permit standards. We have done a couple of these in the past. You may recall, about a year ago, just across the street here on Sunny Slope, there was a proposed tear-down and rebuild, and they're repositioning the home on the lot. It was the same process. We also did one out in the Indian Hills area, where they were raising the first floor four feet above the existing. So, this is actually the third one that we've done, where there wasn't a groundwater issue that was causing the home to be raised. So, with that, staff and planning commission are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions in the approving resolution before you.
June, Member Bennett?
Thank you. Director Teague, I have several questions. So, I don't find in the packet a depiction of the present conditions. Am I missing something?
I don't believe we had a picture of the existing home.
Okay, and I also didn't find, there is an aerial photograph, Hennepin County property map, in the small pages, that does depict the homes on the opposite side of the pond, that's at the back of this property. But I don't find anything in the top of graphic maps that shows me what the relative heights are in terms of the descent or climb to those properties. So, here are the questions that I have. Not being able to see what is there today, what is the relative amount of hardscape that's going to be added to the driveway configuration with this house in comparison to what is there with the new construction, compared to what is there today?
I don't have an exact number for that. Perhaps the applicant has run that calculation.
I'll save that question for the applicant. And then, am I correct, in my hearing during the planning commission presentation and discussion, it was stated that the water from the front of the house will then flow into public structure, but that we have correspondence from engineering that indicates that the public structure is pretty near capacity, that there is not a lot of excess capacity in the public system to which this will flow?
I believe that's correct, and I believe Mr. Bittner is here this evening. I'm not sure if he's
Right over here.
Behind me, but
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bittner.
If not, perhaps Chad.
Sorry about that, Director Mailer.
Sorry, Ross had been very involved in this.
16 days out of town, and I, yeah. Okay, so then, I think that question about the relative amount of hardscape is an important question. Also, again, if I heard the discussion correctly, it appears that the drainage from the back of the house now is planned to flow to the pond. There was some discussion about infiltration structures. Are they still on the table, or is there no infiltration structure now planned for the backyard?
I believe there is. There is not a plan for those structures at this point.
Okay, so the plan is the pond?
I'll have to defer that to our engineering.
That's okay, Ms. Bittner is arriving shortly to
Okay, and, great. And then, and, let's see, to save that question, because the question is how much above that, how much distance, how much above the other houses are, are they going to be at risk? Finally, I think, question about the process. I did find my paperwork from both of those two previous considerations. One was because the house was actually being readdressed to face another street that was higher than its previous address. It was a house that abutted two streets, front yard and backyard, and that orientation was being shifted, the one in the adjacent neighborhood. The other one was a location which was a kind of a split level, and I think there was a question about where that first floor would be. There was also some question of distance from Arrowhead Lake, and finally, keeping the profile of the house as low as possible. Has there been any consideration by the planning commission of an application that was simply for additional height in the basement?
I don't believe so. Utilizing an existing basement.
That didn't relate to water, and it didn't relate to confusion of a front door, it didn't relate to changing an address on another street, I think is what I hear you saying.
Right, thank you. Okay, so that question. And then, another question is, was there any supporting documentation tendered to staff? I know that the applicant's narrative states that there was intrusion, water intrusion into the foundation at the front of the property. Is there any documentation of that, other than the applicant's narrative?
Yeah, I have not seen any.
Okay. And then, last question is, with a CUP, I know that the planning commission is working on a code change, because we've discussed how the CUP was created as a path around when the Supreme Court disallowed variances under state law, until the legislature rebroke the state law, for a period of about a year. However, is there a difference in who receives notice between a CUP and a variance, and how people, how neighboring properties that may be impacted by something are enabled then to comment?
There would be a conditional use permit. Notification is sent out to properties within 1,000 feet. The variance, I believe, it's 350 feet.
So, it's actually not for notice for a variance?
Correct. And there's just one public hearing for the variance, where the conditional use, there are two.
Okay. Then, question for our city attorney. Is there any question in, I know there was some question raised at the planning commission about what your thoughts were, whether or not you've been asked. Is there, if, is a variance to a CUP essentially a use variance, as one of the planning commissioners claimed?
No.
Okay.
In this context, I don't, it's not a use variance.
Okay, so it's permissible?
Yes, it's a standard.
Okay. And then, may I address my questions to Mr. Bittner at this time, or should I wait?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Let's stay on the roll.
Mr. Bittner, I have some questions regarding stormwater management. It's my understanding that the plan for the water from the front of the property is that it entered the public system in the street? Okay. And I heard at the planning commission some discussion about concerns about the maximum usage already of that public system, or not much remaining capacity. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we know, as a city government, the relative amounts of hardscape currently existing on the property and intended or planned to be installed with redevelopment of this property?
I don't recall at this time, but I remember there was a very moderate increase in the first proposal that we looked at, in the neighborhood of, you know, less than 1,000 square feet of an additional hardscape. I'd like to have the numbers before I really answer that question with certainty.
I know the total lot coverage figure increase is low, in part because they proposed to reuse the foundation. I guess, but that would not, would that include the driveways?
Sorry, I don't have the application materials in front of me. I really can't answer that.
So, the hardscape would include the home?
So, right, the planning commission often considers hard-surface coverage requirements, and those are, they go for a goal of land use, you know, the character and the scale of the neighborhood. When we get into the engineering review, and we look at the stormwater management plan, we often ask them to do additional calculations of the impervious surfaces.
Okay.
And that includes all of the driveways. There's no, there's no caveats for things that don't count in impervious surface, because it all matters.
Okay, so that was, in fact, evaluated and considered in?
Yes, we consider that, and we require their stormwater, or their engineers who puts together the stormwater plan, to provide us calculations for impervious surfaces.
Okay, so that addresses, I think, my concerns at the front of the property. I still don't know, because our packets usually include a depiction of existing conditions, so we're allowed to make a visual comparison even. It's not as scientific, but depending on the measurements given in the plans, we can compare and contrast what's there today with what's proposed to be there. In this instance, we just have what's proposed to be there. With respect to the stormwater pond at the rear of the property, it looks like there's fairly significant distance between that stormwater pond and the home, not to mention the very steep slopes that lead down to it. But looking at the only depiction in the packet of the neighboring homes on the other sides of the pond, it looks like their distance to the pond is, in fact, quite slight, and I don't have anything in the packet that indicates to me the amount of slope that lies between those homes and the pond. What information does staff have about that situation?
During the first application, we got an initial stormwater management plan that proposed some sort of volume control features or underground storage that were collecting roof drainage from the rear of the lot, and infiltrating the water behind the retaining wall, and just upstream of that steep forested slope. We saw that as more of a detriment to the overall stability of the slope than, you know, diverting the water to the front yard into the public system. The public system, the downstream system in the rear yard is a landlocked wetland, meaning there's no natural outlet or no man-made piped outlets. But the amount of freeboard between the usual water elevations and the nearby homes is generous in that area, so we don't see a problem. We've got a comprehensive water resource management plan that looks into the risks of the water bodies, and if the applicant is intentionally putting the water towards a system with positive drainage, we don't see any additional risk there.
So, by freeboard, you're describing the difference between, in other words, the allowance for bounce?
That's right.
That because it's a landlocked pond, if there is a major storm event, drainage is coming off this property, because there's no longer consideration of any infiltration devices because of the steep slopes, that the pond is going to be able to handle that additional fill water, stormwater, without rising to such a level that it poses a threat to the adjacent properties on the other side of the pond?
That's right.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question, Mayor? Member Brennan?
I think I'd like, I think I would like to hear from the proponent.
Okay.
And I think that some of our questions will be answered and kind of explained when we hear them.
And who's here to speak for the proponent? And could you give us your name and address, please, when you speak?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Ted Carlson. We're the owners of 5516 Knoll Drive, and we also live at 6324 Brookview Avenue, here to answer any questions you may have.
And so, you are the owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can you walk me through the changes in the stormwater management plans from the preliminary submittals to post-staff recommendation?
Yes, the original plan called for retention in stormwater catchpatience on the rear of the site. Working through the city engineering staff, we determined that gutters would be more than enough to control the stormwater. The addition to the site and the hardscape surface goes from 6.9% to about 8% of the total site coverage, so it's fairly insignificant. With regards to the addition of the driveway, it's simply adding a third stall, so the driveway addition is fairly insignificant.
On the plans that I noticed, you're adding more basement on, looking from the street to the house on the right side.
Yes.
You're adding the extra car garage, and then, it looks like you're adding behind that for basement, and then, a room that includes a wet bar also as an addition on the back to the house?
Wet bar's not an addition. It's just the addition behind the garage, the additional addition beyond the garage, and on, from the street on the right for a master bath.
So, the windowed space that you refer to as wet bar is existing today?
Say that again, please?
The space in the lower level that you refer to as the bar area with a wet bar is existing today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions, Member Brendon?
I do. Mr. Carlson, there are a couple of what I think are stormwater tools that I'd like to know whether they are for use during construction, or if they're permanent. There's a dandy dewatering bag, and there is a flow well gravel installation. There's another, so they're, they both look to me like they are water retention devices to keep water from flowing too quickly. Are they just for construction, or are they part of what's going to be installed on the property?
My understanding is just for construction, because in conjunction with the Nine Mile Creek Stormwater District, a large portion of the slope in the rear will be with no more grasses, which will be to do two things. Number one, retain the bank, and number two, slow the flow of any stormwater into that pond.
Nice. What is the, what's the angle, or what's the grade from the house down to the pond? It's significant, is it not?
Yeah, it'll be a lot of fun for sledding. But the total height elevation change from the basement to the pond is approximately 50 feet.
That's what it looks like.
As for the angle or the distance, it's in excess of 100 feet from the pond.
All right. And so, when you're looking at this, is, is your backyard the most, the greatest slope, and the neighboring yards are less slope, or are they all similar?
I think that the house to the east is less slope, but also does not have pond access. The house, two houses, two to three homes, houses to the west have similar elevation changes.
Okay. All right. Okay, Joni was asking about the driveway. The property currently has a circle drive.
Correct.
Okay. So, your addition to that, your driveway is a circle drive, and it has an entrance to the house and the entrance to the garage with the added third stall. So, as you say, that's not a, it's not a significant addition of hard space?
I consider it to be insignificant. I would also like to note that we would prefer to remove the circle drive, but according to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, we cannot do so, because it's disturbing the soil. So...
Okay. All right. And the circle drive that exists, has it, it has that, it's got lawn or some plantings in the circle itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you're going to basically continue using what's there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, the part of the house that you're going to continue to use is the foundation?
Correct.
Okay, are you adding to that foundation at all?
Yes.
Okay. And where are you adding to that foundation?
From the street, it would be on the west, which is where there's a master bath area, and then on the east, which is adding a third stall garage, and what you would call
Okay, so on both of the, basically both ends. Okay, all right. Let's see. The house, let's see here, east and west, okay, 5512 and 5520. All right, 5512, your front stoop looks like it'll be at 955, about 955. Do you know that?
It's, yeah, there's, without knowing which, what you're looking at exactly, multiple numbers.
Carrie, do you know what his front stoop then would be with the? I'm just looking at where the front stoop is going to be in the, I'm looking at the drawing of the proposed, of the proposed house, and I see the existing house, so I want to be sure what I'm looking at here.
955 is existing, so it's going to be 2.16 feet above that.
Sounds correct.
So, it's more like 957, some change.
Well, that's my point, because I've got existing house and proposed house both superimposed here, so I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
955 is existing.
I don't know how you see, oh, maybe it's in the text. All right.
I think you found it in the written work, so you don't have to look at it in the ...
All right, very good. Okay. Well, I think that's all I have.
Okay, Member Bennett, do you have anything else?
No additional questions. Again, my concerns are more with the public, the stormwater and the impact on the pond, and I think the materials are clear as to the proposal for the new house. It's just that those existing conditions and the comparisons.
Okay, Member Sprague?
In the applicant presentation below us, you talked about additional plantings, and I see those on the landscape plan. Are those all ornamental, or do they serve some type of stormwater management function as well?
Well, the stormwater management function is nearer to the water. We've got no more grasses that are designed to retain and slow water flow. The rest of the plantings will be a combination of ornamental and screening with the neighbors.
Okay, so not green infrastructure, per se. It's more on the ornament, ornamental and screening function?
Yes, we've retained all of significant trees that are there, and the only thing we've done to the site is removed buckthorn.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll let you sit down, and we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
If you came to speak about this project, you'll have three minutes. I would prefer you use the side microphones unless you have a picture, and then Jennifer will give you a handheld microphone. And I will need a name and an address. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this project?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Further questions for the proponent, or for member, or Director Teague?
I do have a question for Mr. Bittner, if he's still available. In your modeling of the impact of potential increased flow on the pond, was there, rising on the pond, did you do any future modeling that took into account the rate of increase that we've seen in the size of 150-year events, and did you project that forward? What was your evaluation based on?
Modeling on applicants' work, we essentially, we set a standard, and we see that they've met it. So, in this case, we referred to modeling that the city already has in their comprehensive water resource management plan. It's a document that's done that study and examined the amount of area that currently drains to this body, how much storage is available in the body, compared to its usual water elevations and nearby structures. And seeing that it was just so far below, it didn't seem to pose a risk, based on our professional judgment. So, we didn't do any modeling.
Member Sprague?
In terms of the revised stormwater management, as I understand, we're controlling rate and flow, but are we improving water quality? And would you look at that as a reasonable condition to approval of this application? In terms of, when I say water quality, I'm talking about a rain garden or some other condition related to
You're talking on the backside of the house towards the pond?
Yes, yep.
I understand your question, Councilmember. The provisions for clean water or water I understand your question, Councilmember. The provisions for clean water or water quality, that, we haven't even gone there for residential redevelopment. Generally, we're looking at rates and volumes of flow and flood protection. Clean water is something that we look to retrofit into neighborhoods when we're doing neighborhood street reconstruction programs. We also hold permits for both watershed districts in the state for pollution reduction. There's really no policy that we have that guides us into pushing those requirements upstream onto private properties and redevelopment.
One of the questions, I think, though, Engineer Bittner, is that is this pond completely surrounded by homes? So what flows off of those homes is the only water that goes, or do we have any street drains or anything that add to the water in this pond?
Yeah, I think my recollection is pretty good that it's only, it's landlocked and it's very limited in its drainage area, so essentially the roof lines from nearby...
So really, the only way to improve this is home by home as we move around the lake, encouraging or requesting or having a condition upon approval of a project to improve the edge of the lake to help the quality of the lake, correct?
That's incorrect. The city manages a program for lakes and ponds, and oftentimes, so the quality of the waters has a lot to do with the nearby landscape and runoff, but it also has to do with the management of the water body, and through that recent comprehensive water resource management plan amendment that you've made, you've enabled a process that allows the residents to self-help and manage those water bodies.
You're talking about through the grant process, or...
This was a recent comprehensive water resource management plan major amendment for lakes and ponds management.
Member...
Neil, but then I have a question that follows up on this.
Your Honor and Councilmember Sprague, I think your question, though, is can we use stormwater management as a provision to regulate the CUP?
Thank you.
Right?
Yes.
And I think the answer to that is that we cannot. I think that's what I just heard Engineer Bittner say, and I don't know if the city attorney has additional context. We can request, we can encourage, but I'm not sure that we can use, if we've got, that we've got the regulatory authority to make that as a demand in a CUP process, at least at this time.
I would concur with that. The conditions you can attach have to relate directly to the variance and the CUP, which is the height of the structure.
Okay.
That's what you're dealing with. So if the increased height of the structure needs to be off, has some negative impacts that you need to offset, then you can have conditions that relate directly to that height.
Okay, so I think that's your answer. Are there any other questions?
I did have a question for Mr. Bittner.
Okay.
And I'm very familiar with that document that you're describing. I thought, it was on our consent agenda, but it was very well prepared. Do you recall in that document what the classification of this body of water is, and what it would take to get the kind of city support that you're talking about?
Right. Likely, this is one of the smaller water bodies with a low or C classification. Any water body can get the self-help services and a little bit of professional service time from the city if they form an association that is specifically set up a nonprofit set up for the management of that water body, and then we come in and we help them out. But all of their improvements would be special assess, assessed if they so chose to do them. We would just facilitate whatever they chose to do.
It's only larger bodies of water with public access, possible significant impairment, the measurement of impairment?
Right.
That then could qualify for public, for intervention that was paid for another way, correct?
And usually partially paid for, up to a certain minimal level of servicing. You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there no further questions?
No, I'll make a motion to that we adopt Resolution 2014-104.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Mangan. Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brendon?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Swenson? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're on to our second public hearing of the night, and it is the final rezoning and final site plan for the Farnshu Commercial Real Estate Group. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, this is a site you're all extremely familiar with. We've been through a couple of sketch plans, as well as preliminary rezoning, and we did a comprehensive plan amendment for this site. It's located just west of Highway 100 at the intersection of Metro Boulevard and Edina Industrial Boulevard. The current zoning is POD 1. The council has approved preliminary rezoning of the site to PCD 2, consistent with the properties to the south. The comprehensive plan amendment was to guide this site, as well as those commercial properties to the south, to neighborhood commercial. The existing building on the site is about a 12,000-square-foot office building. The applicant is proposing to tear that down and build a 10,000-square-foot retail building. There's no changes here from what was approved from the preliminary approval. It made some slight modifications based on planning commission and council recommendations. There's two restaurants on each end with a drive-through on the east side, and the applicant has his materials board here for the council to take a look at as well, and they'll get into a little bit more detail, but it's essentially, it's the same building that was approved as part of the preliminary approval. The primary concern, or a lot of the discussion that the planning commission centered around the engagement of the street and boulevard trees. This is the plan that was considered by the planning commission. As you see, there were no boulevard-style trees shown in that plan. The planning commission added a condition that they bring trees out to the street, and that the applicant has revised their plan, and they're proposing three boulevard trees. There was a condition by the planning commission where they suggested the equal number of boulevard trees be included into the project. When you go out there and see the site, it's, there's about six trees all along the street. Four might be considered boulevard trees as they're in between the street and the sidewalk. The applicant is suggesting three boulevard trees in their proposal. You see, there's a 10-foot boulevard from the street to the sidewalk. The sidewalk width would be five feet. So again, this is the second step in the review process, final rezoning to PCD 2 and final development plan, and there's a couple of variances. That's to bring the building up to the street, although on the south side, a 33-foot setback is proposed here, as they have pushed it back a little bit from the original proposal, and then the 20-foot setback is off Metro Boulevard. So primary issue considered is the proposed rezoning and variance reasonable. Both staff and planning commission believes that it is. Again, it meets the general plans that were approved in the preliminary approval. Traffic study was looked at as part of that first review, and there's no negative impacts on traffic. The proposed uses are consistent with the adjacent land uses. The site would be quite an improvement from the first sketch plan that we looked at. As you recall, there were two buildings kind of in the middle with a sea of parking around it, so we have improved the site plan dramatically from the original sketch plan that was reviewed. So with that, staff and planning commission are recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined, just to highlight some of the conditions that were suggested by the planning commission, and they have been included in the resolution. They're suggesting no utilities be located in the front or the south side of the building, that they be located on the west side. That directional signage be included on the site to direct traffic out of the drive-through toward Metro Boulevard. They're recommending that the end cap doors of the restaurants on this side and this side would remain open during business hours. And I did hand out a revised resolution on the dais this evening that amends condition number four, and this was another discussion item at the planning commission. The original condition of approval suggested that the applicant not be responsible for the boulevard trees after the two-year warranty period, and I've taken that out. That was oversight on my part. The planning commission did remove that condition, and the applicant is agreeable, standard with all of our commercial projects where they are responsible for boulevard trees. So with that, I can stand for any questions that you may have.
Member Sprague?
I want to go back to the boulevard for a second. Before, their side of the sidewalk was improved. Now, we're bringing the trees down into the boulevard, and they're suggesting three, and our planning commission said four.
Yeah, they suggested an equal number of boulevard trees from what was, what's there today.
So that's condition three?
Correct.
And did they have any discussion about the, anything in between the trees being improved? Because when they had the landscaping up above the sidewalk, there was a tree, then there were plantings, and then another tree, and to me, we should be, that's a pretty hostile environment for a pedestrian, even with that boulevard that, I mean, it's just busy, a lot of volume, a lot of congestion, so I think we should be trying to improve that streetscape as much as we can if we really want to make this a walkable environment. So, four trees is what is in the condition, but I think we also need to have something in between the trees to make that a really pedestrian-friendly...
In addition to the sod, some type of plantings?
It says equal number of trees. You said equal number of trees is three, not four, correct? So the condition is...
The applicant is proposing three.
Ah, okay.
The commission condition was an equal number of boulevard trees that exist today.
Okay, yep, no, that's what I was reading. I was just...
So is that, if this were to move forward with that, how would we make that direction as a condition? Is that in the additional landscaping, subject to review, well, that's city forester and engineer, so...
If it would, it would be a staff review at the time of a building permit. I would say that there would be four boulevard trees out there today, so that one would need to be added if we honored that planning commission recommendation.
Can I chime in here on boulevard trees?
Sure. Member Brendon?
The landscape that is proposed here is very architectural in how it is, how it surrounds the building and how it meets the sidewalk. Everything is at an angle, everything fits in a niche, and I think that's why you see three trees, because if you look at the trees on the west, toward the west, on the drawing that's in front of us, they fit into a niche in the design of the building. So that's why I think there are three there and not four. So I think I respect the design and understand why there are three, and it's okay with me that there are three.
Okay. Member Bennett, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I have a couple of questions regarding the revised or corrected resolution put before us this evening. When I listened to the planning commission discussion and took notes, I did note that that, the strikeout, was something that was done in their motion. I also heard that there was a reference made to the caliper measurement of the trees, that there was some concern that existing bigger trees would be replaced with trees that would not eventually achieve the kind of size the trees have now, and I don't see that in the resolution. So the three points, the no time limit, I see that change. And then the last thing is the use of Edina Industrial Boulevard, was that exit or entrance, trying to direct people to use it as an entrance to the drive-through because of the potential conflict with traffic? I heard the word entrance, but I'm, I'm open to hearing that my hearing was incorrect.
Yeah, it was my understanding to direct the drive-through traffic toward Metro Boulevard.
As they exited?
As they exited.
Okay, and I heard as it entered.
Okay.
Or directing toward, which I understood to be, so it could have been that my hearing was colored by my perception.
I do have a question. This doesn't need proof of parking. I thought originally maybe there were a couple places we needed, and one was right where that tree is on the entrance off of Edina Industrial Boulevard. But when I read this, it says that the study that was done for traffic and for parking said that it did. Now, there is no parking on Edina Industrial Boulevard, and I checked with our city engineer, and there is no parking on Metro Boulevard, so this has to stay contained within its site for parking. So if you have two popular places, there aren't a whole lot of places where you can park and then walk across that aren't somebody else's parking lot. Do you have any concerns?
I do have, I do have concerns, similar to the, across the freeway, where there's some parking issues over there.
Yep.
So the driver here is going to be the number of seats in the restaurants, so they'll have to submit plans, whatever the new restaurants are on each end, you know, looking at the center as a whole, that they can't exceed those parking requirements.
And the only other way they can do, we have different rules for how many seats are in the restaurants, and whether it's served dining, non-serve dining, or just counter pickup with a few seats, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and one would assume this isn't served dining, so you're going to be judging it on counter pickup and then the tables, correct?
Correct.
Similar to Hello Pizza that's at 44th and France, that cannot have service to their tables?
Correct.
By menu, et cetera, that you have to go order and sit down, okay?
Right.
So if you control it by seats and it still becomes a problem, we don't really have anything to fall back on?
We don't. We just have the code. They have to meet, they have to meet the code requirements for parking.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? Would the proponent like to come up and speak before we open it up to a public hearing? Welcome.
Mayor Protem, councilmembers, I'm Dave Anderson with Farnshu. We're the property owner, 7101 West 78th Street is our address, and we have been at this for some time, as you know, working at this. We're excited really about activating the corner, bringing that energy with this development. I think we've refined and brought this plan together, I think in a meaningful way that addresses those issues. I think the point here tonight, we do have our landscape architect available to talk through some of the essence of the landscape design, because we do provide the quantity and meet your code intent with landscape quantities, and it is about spacing and making sure spatial arrangements are working well for the landscaping. The other aspect is this is a retail use, and there's retail activity, so sightlines are very important as well. So we've asked them to put a lot of thought into placing the types of trees that will look good all year long, but also will provide the ability for sightlines with building signage and so forth to really be complementary. And I think that represents other projects in the city of Edina where trees have been placed in front of retail uses along France Avenue and other locations. So that's what we've tried to do. Landscape architect could answer a few more questions in that regard tonight. Regarding the conditions, Mr. Teague mentioned a revision to the fourth condition, which we did have discussion about. We felt maintaining those trees on the inside of the sidewalk would provide better longevity, health, the ability to keep them out of way of vehicles and snow and salt buildup and so forth. That's why we were concerned about long-term maintenance, if that, if they were placed in that condition, given that there's a lot of movement and storage that could happen there. The point on the third condition of approval would be another consideration that was mentioned. Mr. Teague mentioned the four trees, replacing the equal number, and I think relative to condition three tonight, we would just ask that that third, or that second sentence of condition three be removed, if you'd be so willing to consider that. And our landscape architect, again, can give you more of our basis for our view and meeting what we've submitted for the landscape plan. So thank you.
Member Sprague has a question for you.
In condition three, it says additional landscaping, including deciduous trees, shall be planted in the boulevard. So if your request is to go back to three, what's the additional landscaping that's going to give the pedestrian enough of a perceived buffer to make it a friendly place to walk, as well as maintain your sightlines?
Councilmember Sprague, I'd like to have the landscape architect address that for you?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Is it part of your presentation?
Could I?
My name is Paul Kangas. I'm the principal landscape architect at Laux Associates. We are located at 7200 Hemlock Lane in Maple Grove, Minnesota.
Thank you, Ms. Janis.
I appreciate many of the astute comments that are made at meetings like this. I have to defend our projects on many different occasions, and you're obviously aware of many of the issues related to good landscape design, one being balance, one being sightlines for a commercial property. One of the biggest challenges to landscaping within a right-of-way, or in this case, a boulevard, is that long-term maintenance. If you travel through the country, you see many areas that have greater landscape in the streetscape, and it's that 50 to 75 inches of snow that we get every year that has a big impact on what we can do. So the trees being in the boulevard or not, in a lot of ways, from a visual standpoint, isn't that large of an issue. Our client is amenable to putting them in the boulevard with the concerns that were noted for long-term maintenance. When you talk about additional landscaping, the question I would pose to you is, is what could survive in that environment? It's along a major roadway with significant snow, significant salt spray. We could do some perennials. Shrubs generally don't do well in that environment. So it really becomes an issue of, do we do landscaping on the other side of the sidewalk that can have a better shot at looking good long-term? Or do we move that to the boulevard where it might be more subject to adverse conditions, certainly? So I don't know exactly what I would put in that area that would have a good chance of survival. And that's the reason everything is moved to the interior of the property.
If you look on France Avenue, go to the Whole Foods site, you can see good boulevard landscaping that's near the, in the right-of-way. If you look on 70th Street, you can see people, well, actually, at Arson Acres, they've done daylilies in the boulevard. There's all kinds of examples. And there's another project we just approved on York. We're asking for the same thing. So it's possible. There are salt and drought tolerant species. And what I'm asking tonight is, are you amenable to adding that landscaping for the benefit of the pedestrian in between the trees in order for us to give you the sightlines you need for the project? That's my question.
Sure.
Councilmember Sprague, yes, the answer is yes. But we want to make sure also, we have, you know, clear, you know, clear understanding of what we could do there. And I think what, what you're getting at is some balance between those, the spacing of those trees. So if, we can get clear direction from the discussion here, if we're agreeable to three trees, and the idea is between, you know, those two points where there's, there's space here and here?
Yep.
You know, to find that, that sort of lower-level landscape treatment that can, can survive, then absolutely, you know, find a way to bring that to life.
Appreciate that.
I think Member Brindle wants to add something.
Thank you. I support comments made both by my colleague, Member Brindle, and my colleague, Member Sprague. I do see the balance in your design. I know Member Brindle's a gardener, I am as well. And I also agree with Member Sprague that there are salt and drought tolerant perennials. I think not so much calling for shrubs, understanding that you're going to want, again, to keep that line of sight open. You also want to keep your long-term maintenance issues low, lower. But I think that your trees are going to have a happier, longer life if you use those salt and drought resistant perennials than if you try to plant turf and end up with the same issues caused by salt and drought potentially, and then you're replacing turf. I think the tree roots are going to get more water, they're going to be happier, and you're going to provide a little bit of wiggle room for people who are walking on the sidewalk. So I think a happier environment for pedestrians and for the trees themselves.
Does anyone have any other questions? I do.
Okay, Member Brindle?
I'm going to revisit, this does not have to do with landscape. I'm going to revisit a part of this site that is challenging. It's a very compact site. You have, you have definitely come a long way with the design and the, and the placement of the building on the site. I am looking at page 838, which is the traffic flow through the site. And we can use that drawing, I think that's right on the, right there, yep?
Right there.
Yes, we can use that drawing. So a vehicle can come in, into the site from Edina Industrial Boulevard, and they're going to come up and they're going to make a U-turn into the drive-through. And they're going to come out of the drive-through and they have a choice of taking a left or a right to go out. A vehicle can come into the site on Metro Boulevard, and they can travel along that north side of the site, and they can cross the outgoing of the drive-through to get to the entrance to the drive-through, then go around and have a choice of whether to go right or left to go out. So we actually have some crossing of traffic, and I don't know how busy this is going to be. It is a compact site, and that is a compact part of a compact site. And there are going to be, there's going to be a lot of interaction there. So, so now I've set my stage for the question, and that is, what kind of signage, what kind of routing are you going to suggest to motorists in the site?
It's a good question.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm going to have our site plan architect, who's available here tonight too, step in if there's things I don't hit here.
Sure.
But let me just start with, the idea, first of all, is we've designed with adequate aisle widths for two-way traffic, 24-inch, or 24-foot lane dimensions and adequate parking spaces. So, you know, we've designed the site with that in mind, that vehicles have to come and go. There's going to be times of days where the peak use for the drive-through tenant, which will be serving hot drinks in the morning. So that will be, you know, a time of day when the other uses of retail might be less active with that drive-through piece. So, you know, we see some balance of the flow of activity. One part of the center will be more active at certain times of day, certainly when there's less activity on the other end. So that would just be one piece of it about thinking about when some of those peak times of operation occur. A lot of that, that eastbound traffic, over time, if they, if they turn in here, the, the engineers have designed so, so someone can make that left turn in?
Yep.
To the drive-through. So that certainly is designed so that can happen. But as folks who are familiar with this area will come in, it's a very easy move to go into the right, to make the right, to make the other right, and to flow in and then back out of the site. So we think over time, that's going to be the routine movement of the daily customer, the usual customer at a center like this.
Well, they'll just prefer to take that right?
Yes, it's going to be the path of sort of logic, right? I mean, people are just going to get that and understand it. We're working with our end cap tenant here, the coffee tenant right now, to encourage with directional signage for vehicles to exit this way. And I think that was one of the conditions. So there will be arrows pointing people to exit on Metro Boulevard interior to the site, so we'll encourage that. And again, we think the site is designed with the dimensions to be able to move that traffic, but we think it's going to largely be moving onto that Metro Boulevard right turn, right in, and then the logical move in and out. So that would basically cover it. I think the thought process there with, with the drive-through functionality. Did I address?
Yep, yep, it's fine. It's fine. And it just, I just wanted to know that there will be some assistance for the motorists as they try and navigate it the first time.
Yes.
So they'll get it.
Right.
And, and they'll probably come back here, and they won't need any help later on.
We hope so.
Parking places, are all the parking places open for everyone in the, in any of the shops? Or are any of them dedicated to a particular shop, like a 15-minute for this one or a 15-minute for that one?
We have not made any of those types of commitments yet to dedicating parking, so we view this as being available to, to all tenants.
Okay.
And your employees?
Pardon me?
And your employees?
Absolutely, yeah, tenants, meaning their employees and guests.
Okay. Yeah, okay. And I guess my preference would be that it would be all open parking?
Yes.
And that, you know, it certainly, it's up to you, but, but if, if in fact it's full and the only spot that's available is a dedicated parking spot that doesn't fit that individual, that, you know, that parking is tight enough, that I, I would hate to see any of them be, be dedicated.
Yeah. Councilmember, too, just to add, you know, this, this east bay of parking will be a good location for employee parking.
Sure.
You know, people can park there longer term, it's somewhat removed, and it keeps spaces free for customers.
Yep, yep. I anticipate a lot of walk-up traffic, too, with where this is, so. All right, those are my questions.
Yes, Member Bennett?
I have one remaining question that may be for Mr. Kangas, and that is, we, in, again, my hearing of the planning commission presentation and discussion, there was reference, both in the discussion before the motion and during the discussion of the motion, to the new trees having a size equivalent to the trees that exist already, the existing trees. And it was mentioned by the planning commission, who's a landscape architect, as caliper measurements. Director Teague, is that, did that not then become part of the motion and the conditions? It was, again, during the context of the motion, proposed as an amendment. And to Mr. Anderson, is that something that is in, so I think you're hearing that you're going to get a, likely to get a positive vote on the three trees rather than the four. What is your intention with regard to the size of the trees? And the type of trees?
Right. Councilmember, I'll just start with, with the idea of, and I will let Mr. Kangas talk about why we've designed the honey locusts. We brought them, yeah, it'll be a honey locust product, but I don't know what's there today represents really any rhyme or reason. And in terms of the type of trees, the size of tree, you know, there's, there's a variety, but I get back to the consistency that we're trying to create with our landscape package as an overall.
So you are having, for three of the same, they have that lightly filtered shade, the ultimate height is, what, 40, 60 feet, or 40, 50 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, and I know I see them planted a lot on the boulevards in Minneapolis, so I'm assuming that their salt and drought tolerances?
Yeah.
Good?
Yes, honey locusts are well-suited for an urban environment, more salt tolerant, more tolerant of drought conditions. The plan that's in your packet has two-and-a-half inch caliper trees, which are a very common size at installation and meets your city ordinance. Larger trees are available, but given the tight space that these will be located in, if you talk to people in the green industry, you might get different opinions as to whether or not larger bald and burlap trees are really a good precedent. If you could spade them in, you could go even larger, but I don't know that utilities in that area and the space that's available would be an option. And I haven't verified that with my client. But slightly larger trees may be available on a bald and burlap, but two-and-a-half inches are very common landscape installation.
And do you know the measurement of what exists there today?
I do not. And I was not at the planning commission meeting to hear those comments firsthand, so I can't comment on what was said.
Okay, thank you.
Kate, I'll let you sit down. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and comment on this, you have three minutes, and I would like your name and your address, please. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So it sounds like we've gone back and forth on the three to four trees. Do we have a final change to anything of anyone who wants to make a motion?
I'll move the final approval with a change to condition three. Additional landscaping, including, keep that open because we've been working from that one. Including three deciduous trees shall be planted within the boulevard, subject to review and approval of the city forester and city engineer. And of course, Planner Teague, you'll have heard our conversation this evening about the planting beds in between, and the landscape person can go take a look on France and at Whole Foods as well for some comparison. And then on, on condition four, is there another change there?
That was already crossed off.
That's already struck in, that's already, I'm sorry, it's already been striked from the, from condition four, so just, just a change.
So condition fourth ends with the word that dies.
Correct, that's my motion.
I'll second the motion. Do you have any questions or concerns about tree size? Is that a concern for anybody else?
I see that it's subject to review and approval of the city forester. And again, based on the conversation this evening, Planner Teague can converse with the forester and see what the, the most generous tree size would be that's, will accommodate utilities and also fit in that, in the right-of-way.
And understanding the desire for long-term sustainability.
Correct, yep.
Would you also like to see the materials board before we vote on this?
Yes.
Because I know that they brought it.
Thank you.
And since they made the effort to bring it, I think we should look at it.
Absolutely.
Could you introduce yourself, since I, is this your first time tonight in front of us?
On this project, yes.
Yes.
Good evening, members. My name is Eric Reiners. I'm with Sporidis Reiners Architects, and I know my partner has done a stellar jab presenting this project in earlier phases of, of review. The materials in general that are proposed and illustrated in the, in the final design concept are those that meet with the city ordinances for, for finishes and percentages, but primarily brick and stone throughout most of the facade. It is a cultured stone and, and an ephes or, or stucco cornice about the perimeter, around the top. Pre-finished metal flashings, pre-cast concrete sills at material transitions, and of course, glass, tinted glass for the, for the windows.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
The only, the only remaining comment I have, which does not have to do with materials, is that it's possible in the future that an adjacent building might be a couple stories high, tall. And, and I've mentioned this before, but it's kind of my, my thing. And that is when, if somebody's on an upper floor in an adjacent building, keep in mind what they're going to see on the roof of this building, and make sure that it's not just equipment. But, but the, what, the appointments of the building, as you walk up to it, drive up to it, bike to it, go by it on the street, are very attractive. And so I know there have to be mechanics on top, that's a fact of life.
Yes.
But, but I'd like to make sure that the mechanics are as aesthetic as they can be. So I'll put it that way.
Do we note it?
Final question, Member Bennett?
Two questions about the glass, and they are the amount of opacity of the glass, if that's the right term. In other words, in what kind of lighting conditions will activity be visible behind the glass? And the percentage of the glass as percentage of facade of the building?
I'm sorry, I don't have the exact percent of facade area that is glazed. But typically, we use a very light tint for retail installations, maximizing visibility both during the day and evening.
Okay.
I believe it's a 20% tint and bronze.
So balance of sun protection, or sun protection balanced with the desire for the activity to be visible to the street?
Precisely.
Because that's part of the?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that was, again, one of the concerns that was raised, in particular, at the planning commission, was that they were concerned the tinted glass would obscure the activity and not live in the corner in the way that they had been hoping. Thank you.
Kate? If that's all, then roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Swanson?
Aye. Thank you. And now I'd like to move, thank you very much, we look forward to seeing it. I'd like to move to community comment. Do you want the microphone, or do you just want to have some? Do you want the microphone, or do you just want to have something there? Okay, let's do them separate, ah, no, we can...
You know what?
Okay.
You know what, maybe I will use a microphone?
Okay.
Hey, that looks good, okay.
Okay.
But then if I look up to move the piece of paper, I may lose my spot.
As you know, I need your name and address, and you have three minutes to talk to us.
Thank you, okay. I'm Lori Groetz, 5513 Park Place. The property to the north of us at 5509 Park Place will be torn down. We currently don't have impact from stormwater from 5509. The property currently has a rear yard catch basin, drain tile, five buried and tiled roof drains, and two sump pump, drains that drain to the catch basin or to the street. This is a wet lot. There is a two-and-a-half-foot retaining wall on the south side of the property with a four-inch lip, here's the lip, on it, and the grade between the wall in the house is essentially level. A retaining wall has been in this location since the lots were created in 1950. Retaining walls create buildable lots, hold back earth, and control water. Mr. Bintner, the licensed city environmental engineer, has approved a drainage plan that will remove the failing two-and-a-half-foot retaining wall. The south grade of the house will be raised by almost two feet, so the builder will not have to get a variance for a side yard setback. With the egress windows that are to be installed on that side, there will only be about seven-and-a-half feet in front of the egress windows to deal with a four-and-a-half-foot drop in grade that is essentially level now. The grades between some of the contours appear to be at least fifty percent, and the total grade at the southwest corner on the front of the house appears to be thirty-nine percent. A small swale is proposed to direct the water to the street and not to our property. No little swale will handle the volume and the force of the water. Currently, no water passes over this retaining wall to our property. Yesterday, my husband spoke with the building official, and he said the failing wall needed to be replaced because of the steep grades. Today, he called my husband and told him Ross had already, had approved the drainage plan, and the wall would be coming out. The permit has not been issued, but the building official does have final say in what goes on in building in the city. They're not showing any catch basin, any drain tile, no gutters. The backyard of the house, they show a swale, part of a swale, part of it's in their yard, part of it's in my yard. A swale should have a grade of about two to six percent to facilitate the movement of the water, but not cause erosion. The grade's going to be about twenty percent for about the first, if I remember correctly, maybe ten or twelve feet, then it cuts down to about seventeen percent. Water's never making it to the street, coming in my yard. The builder's made a mistake, he bought a house with a wet lot, now he wants to drain it into mine, and city code says you can't get more water than you're currently getting. I'm not currently impacted, but the city is supposed to be facilitating some type of a redevelopment process.
Thank you.
And it's not going right. Thank you for your time.
Hello?
Hello. Andy Brown, 5512 Park Place, I live right next to the Groetzes, right across the street from them, and was hoping to follow up with Manager Neil regarding an email that I sent to him back on September 5th regarding section 23-95 of the Edina City Code and the health ordinance regarding that. My neighbor at 5513 Brookview, in the backyard, has a drainage sump pump unit that goes within one foot of the property line, and that dumps over a thousand gallons of water each year into my backyard. I currently have a thousand-dollar sump, or actually, external water pump system that I have had to put in to drain all her water into the street legally, which I'm wondering if that classified as a nuisance, and whether or not I can actually get the city to have her move her water to the engineered system in the front of her yard that exists in that neighborhood, so I'm hoping to get a follow-up email on where that stands, so, thank you.
Thank you, Andy, for coming in. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the rest of our agenda. We have the turf establishment and reconstruction project update. And we have Director Milner. Are you ready?
Director Milner, thank you, appreciate the kickoff on Boulevard restoration and your previous project comments. Will add to that discussion here tonight. So, as we see in many of our planning documents, one of the goals of the city is a sound public infrastructure. In order to continue to have that in place, we need to do infrastructure projects, a big part of that is turf establishment. So in March of 2013, we came to you and recommended seed versus the practice that was in the past with sod. In October of last year, one year from basically tonight, we came back with an update after one construction season, and then we promised we'd come back again after the 2014 season and give you another update, and that's why we're here tonight. So many other communities and agencies and contractors are dealing with the same issue as we heard earlier tonight. The issue with the contractors is they have pretty much a hundred percent control when they put utility pipes in and build streets, but when they do the turf establishment, they either place the sod or the seed, and then they have to kind of maintain it, and they don't know what the, either, what the residents are doing, what are their landscape firms doing, are they mowing it too short, are they fertilizing it? So we're really trying to hold the contractors to a specification, yet it's difficult because it's kind of outside their control. Excuse me, and then we also have many studies that are in place with MINDOT. They just completed a four-year study of seed mixes. They're updating their own seed specifications right now, so that'll be implemented into our projects for next year. University of Minnesota, we discussed our seeding protocol with one of their lead researchers, and they're doing a big study on drought-tolerant seed mixes, which they think is going to be more and more needed if climate change continues to go in the direction that it has been in recent years. Our own public work staff is testing ground cover plants for boulevards right next to our public works facility for use mainly along the state aid roadways, and the reason we're doing that is because that level of service for snow removal, we're seeing that over the past few years just increase, and with that increase, we have more snow and ice on the boulevards, we have more chemicals on the boulevards, and it's tough to establish turf in those areas, so we're looking for some different types of ground cover plants as we go forward with our state aid roadways. So a little summary from last time we're here is why change. Drought conditions, like we talked about, led to brown and dead sod, low watering participation by residents without proper watering after the warranty period, root establishment is very difficult, and again, that input from experts in other communities. Another reason why we changed, the highlighted bullet point there, is it's a higher risk to residents after the warranty period with sod. So the photo on the left has sod that's been established after the six-week warranty period, it's green, the contractor has done their duty to keep it growing and start to establish that root system. The photo on the right-hand side could be after a few weeks, if the residents don't water it, it could get, you know, brown and basically dry up, and so what do the residents do at that point? It's thousands of dollars to repair that, it's outside our contract requirement, so that's one of the risks, higher risk to residents with sod after that warranty period. Some of the benefits for hydroseeding, again, more tolerant to those dry conditions. Either method takes two to three years for root establishment with proper maintenance, so we are requiring residents to do some of that work in that two-to-three-year period. When I have the bullet point there, it says lower risk to residents after the warranty period with hydroseeding. What I mean by that is we've handed off, and if their landscaping firm accidentally mows something too short or applies fertilizer, they just need to go out and get a mulch seed mix from a local hardware store, and they can address it, and that's a relatively low-cost fix versus those thousands of dollars if sod dries up from lack of irrigation. Again, we felt that the maintenance needs were more apparent with hydroseeding than sod, and we were hoping for more resident ownership, and we didn't see quite the ownership we thought we were going to get the first couple of years, we feel that can be improved with some of the communications, and we'll go through some of those improvements here later. And another thing you'll see in the CIP process we're working through this year is that all the projects have a paragraph on an environmental footprint, and hydroseeding has a smaller footprint because it's grown in place versus in a field and transported to the site. So again, just a quick summary, photo on the left is a six inches of new topsoil after the project's been completed. Photo on the right is the hydroseed seed mix, mixture, the mulch seed mixture on the right. Photo on the left is three to four weeks after installation, you can see it's starting to fill in, there is some bare spots there. Photo on the right is after six weeks of installation, and this is from our Lake Edina project in 2013. So the goal, the issues we're having is how do we get from the photo on the left to the photo on the right? We're establishing those areas up to that point, and we're having some difficulty, probably in that twenty percent of the projects, so we think the improvements of the specifications will get us to that photo on the right in much higher cases. Resident concerns, similar to what we discussed last year, is contractors not watering, maintaining the seed, there are the bare spots we just showed, and then weeds in some cases as shown on this photo. So turf can be, establishment, in my opinion, can be broken down into three components, what are the goals? You know, turf is that final step in a very disruptive process, and the residents feel that in some cases it is the most important step as we leave them during this process, but the goal from a city and a residential standpoint is a healthy, weed-free, long-lasting turf. The techniques, it's either sod or seed, and according to metro area industry experts, our own public work staff, and also those U of M researchers, seed is still the proper way to go with proper delivery. What I mean by delivery is that installation. The past two years, we said, here's the project, here's what you can use, and after ninety days, this is what we want. We didn't have a lot of, we left it up to the contractors, it was their contract, we really had to hound them, it was a lot of staff time to get them back to do warranty work stuff. We feel we need to tighten up those specifications and really get hard deadlines and hard requirements on them, and we'll be doing that this year with those industry experts reviewing our specifications. We also worked with the communications department and created a hydroseed flyer to improve those communications to residents and really present that information to them so they know what their requirements are and what they should be telling their landscaping firms. That flyer is in your packet tonight for your review. Now I'll step back and do a little bit of updates on our 2013 projects, because we're seeing a lot of calls and emails, because that was our first year of doing seed. So if we look at sod, when we did it in the past, and seed, we're still getting about the same volume of calls and emails, it's just with sod, there was a hard finish date. After that warranty period, it was done and over, and we could say we're gone. With seed, there's a little bit more of a gray area of where our responsibilities are and where the residents start, so on a volume basis, we feel we're still getting the same number of calls. Recall on 2013 projects, there's the Mendelson project, the Normandale project, Bremer Hills, and Lake Edina. The Mendelson and Normandale probably had some more issues than the other two, and we feel that was, reason for that was late fall and dormant seeding. Didn't take, it didn't germinate as well in the spring as we had hoped, and then we had that wet spring this year, so May-June was so wet that the contractor, we didn't want them to get back in there because they were going to cause more damage to those boulevard areas than they would addressing the issue, so that warranty work was delayed because of that wet spring, and then by the time it was dry enough to do it, we're in the heat of the summer when it's not, not recommended to do the seeding operation, so we waited till the August-September timeline when MINDOT recommends seeding, and that's when we addressed a lot of these concerns. At that point, many of the residents lost patience with our process, we kept communicating with them, telling them we'd keep coming back, we did come back, but some did address those concerns on their own, so we feel that with some proper communication adjustments with the hydroseed flyer and some adjustments to our specifications, we recommend the continued use of seeding for our turf establishment. This photo is from our, one of our 2014 projects, the Countryside F Project, and you can just make out a line there where the existing turf is and the new turf is, so this is a good example of when it turns out just as we had hoped, so. With that, I'll take any questions on hydroseeding.
Member Bennett?
Director Milner, one of the quality control issues appears to be the soil that's used to backfill the areas that were excavated, and I think particularly with Mendelson, that was one of the concerns, is some debris. I've noted in other areas, along some sidewalk project just completed, that the quality of the dirt is excellent. Is that something that staff is specifying to the contractor? Was it not being specified in the past and now is? Or what is staff's position on that, and how actively is staff working on that issue?
Sure, yeah, we, there's different levels of topsoil. We specify a MINDOT topsoil, and we test it for that, for that specific topsoil we specify. The Mendelson project had the same topsoil as Lake Edina, it was the same contractor, six inches went in, so it's the same. We're looking at our topsoil specs, there has been some changes again with the MINDOT specifications based on our seed study. We did use premium topsoil in a few projects, you know, the Country Club was an example, and we see that that tends to settle quite a bit, and we have issues with the settlement behind the curb, so we need to find a balance between that premium topsoil and the topsoil we have today, so we're looking at that to make some possible suggestions, but overall, we're seeing pretty successful areas with that topsoil we are using.
Sure, and I think what I've heard again from residents is just concern in a couple of instances, I don't know if it's a particular contractor, but in terms of debris and the like, and so, quality assurance in that area seems to be something that would be worthwhile, is worthwhile on a staff level, and I think is partly explaining the difference in results that I've seen anecdotally as I've moved around town at residents' requests.
Thank you.
Thank you for this report, we really appreciate it, and we appreciate all the hard work as we try to make our road projects look beautiful from the street all the way to the house, so. Do you, oh, Kate? Member Sprague?
So how do you balance that trade-off? Sod is weed tolerant, seed is drought tolerant, and the two don't have those same qualities, so, I mean, when you look at the Lake Edina, some of the areas I drove through, and you saw, you had some pictures there with the weeds, how do you control that, and how does that affect the environmental equation?
Sure, the best defense against weeds is in healthy lawn, so that picture yourself the weeds, the contractor wasn't maintaining it to the mowing specifications, which we didn't detail out as well as we should have. Many other cases, the residents were just mowing them down, and when they mow them down, then the grass can establish better. Some cases, residents just were hands-off for three months, and then we have that issue with the weeds, so we feel that with that communication that, yeah, when it gets to three inches, mow everything down, and that healthy lawn will address the weed issue.
The other, the other issue is in local versus collector streets. In collector streets, there's even less perceived ownership of the boulevard, so even less maintenance, and so, do we have to change the contracts to put some of that off onto the contractor to do, since we know the residents won't do it? Or do we need to go to a completely different type of system like drought-tolerant perennials or something else? What's your thoughts on that?
Well, it's actually exactly what we did in a piece of the Seventy Street project, we did day lilies there, and that's holding up very well. There is a three-year maintenance contract on that, we can't have an indefinite maintenance contract, so that warranty period is up after three years, and now it's going to be on to the homeowner, so that'll be a good test to see how that goes, but we're going to be coming back here probably recommending the day lilies in the MSA, the collector streets that you mentioned, just because to grow turf in that areas, we tested some of the topsoil, and turf can't grow in those areas with that level of...
It's also urban design, I mean, it looks much better than...
And there's aesthetic qualities also.
Yeah, dead grass, and it's, I think it's nicer for the pedestrian, we have a comment down from the city manager.
But I think that's, that's really one of the key questions for you as a council to discuss, because if you, if you take the position that we will assume more control or more quality control over restoring that lawn to be perfect just the way it was before, all, that drives up the cost of the project, obviously, and that cost isn't one that we, that we do attribute back to the, to the folks who are paying these special assessments, so it is an issue of how do we, how do we accomplish the lawn that you see in front of you in sort of a cost-sharing and effort-sharing process with property owners?
On a local street project, you have more buy-in from the adjacent resident, they're more likely to perceive that as theirs, and so I think you have a better chance of getting the shared maintenance, as long as the spec is right, and that clearly has changed from the beginning to the end. On a collector street, you have less buy-in, less perceived ownership, and so, when you do hydroseed, it works out really poorly on most. There's an example on Forty Fourth where it did really well, but I think if it has any issue whatsoever, you can't count on the residents, and you're better off to get into a contract, or... Or go the other way, invest in something that has more urban design appeal to begin with, maybe costs a little more, but also has a longer maintenance contract and has a different function for the corridor long-term. It looks better. It feels better.
Member Brendel, you had something you wanted to say?
Grass is an invasive species, and it'll grow as long as it has enough water. And I think that's really the education that has to come across to residents, whether they're on. And I, I beg to differ a little bit because if I live on a collector street, it's still my front yard and I still want it to look nice. So it, you know, I, I'm not sure that just because a resident lives along Valley View Road or 70th or 44th or Tracy that they have any less pride of how their front yard looks. So I, I'd hate to have the, the residents think that. But, but getting back to my, to main, my main point, and that is that there's, you just have to water it. And, and it's just attention to detail during a time when the seed needs to germinate. Granted, it has to be the right temperature. If it's too hot or too cold, it's not going to germinate or it's not going to germinate well. But I think the education has to be there because the healthier grass is the seed grass. And that is the grass that will germinate better and it'll be more invasive, and we all want our lawns to be lush. One of the concerns is that very rich soil that goes down because it does compact. When it does compact, who then goes back and fills that area with soil again? Whose responsibility is that?
Yeah, typically, it's still within the warranty period of the project. So if we have some major settlements, that's on the contractor.
Okay. And then is it hydroseeded again?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And we've been doing slit seeding, so as we have some of those bare spots in that one photo, we don't want to rip up the grass that's already started.
Right.
By doing, so they've been doing slit seeding with a small, two-foot-wide slit seeder to introduce that seed in there and keep that existing grass green and, and damaged.
Sure. Well, you know, we have our, we have our garden clubs, and, and they are kind of spread throughout the city. So maybe we can call upon some of the garden club members. They'll all say, what do you, don't refer me. But.
Be careful who you volunteer.
Maybe we can, not necessarily volunteer them, but just in their own neighborhoods, kind of spread the word that, you know, your friend is just, is just making sure that the water, that the grass is watered enough, that it gets a good start. Because once it gets a good start, it'll go. Grass will grow. It wants to grow. But it is when it doesn't get enough water that the weeds grow.
Member Bennett.
There is another objective reason, I think, for the difference with collector and local streets, and that's the salt. That's the road usage, the amount of traffic and the way that that road is then handled during the winter months. And I think in that vein, Member Sprague, the idea that grass, which may or may not survive the salt very well, but can be overseeded. So it's still, it still makes seed, if it is grass, a better choice than sod in terms of the ability to restore it without necessarily a complete replacement. But it also makes looking at something like daylilies and a drought and salt-resistant perennial a good option as well.
Okay. Are we?
Just want to respond to your comment. It's not the yard that I'm talking about, it's the boulevard. When there's a separated sidewalk and then the boulevard, I think, I think the perceived ownership goes down on a busier road, especially when they do the project and they see people out there maintaining it and then they think, well, it's kind of off their radar. If you have something like daylilies, maybe, maybe that enhances their perceived ownership of it, I don't know. But with a three-year contract, it doesn't matter. What about, what about changing the, the watering specifications to your point about, do we have that balance right with the hydroseed? Do we have a long enough period of ma, of maintenance by the contractor to, to cover the growth necessary?
Yep. And that was one of the things we left kind of up to the contractor when they watered it. And we, what we've heard from industry experts is that first two to three window, two to three weeks after it's seeded is the optimal time you need to water it. So we're just going to require them to be out there either daily or every other day and just require that as part of the contract. So that'll address the watering issue.
I know we belabored this, but on the back of this report, I see it says.
We have about six more agenda items.
In the opinion of our residents, it is one of the most important things they consider in determining if the project brought value to their neighborhood. So that's why.
And I, and I think what we hear from Director Milner is that he has continued to work on the quality of the seed, the quality of the contract, the quality of the dirt, and I trust you're going to continue to work on that, and I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we move on to the sanitary sewer infiltration and inflow surcharge with Engineer Bittner, please? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll give a very brief introduction and then stand for your questions. The June 19th storm event where about four to five inches fell in the City of Edina will long be remembered, but maybe after an additional letter has hit your dais today, not quite as acutely as we had anticipated. I'll get to that part of the story here. During that storm event, we had sanitary system backups and dozens of sewer backing, backup in the homes. But our connection to the regional system and the Met Council, whom we pay to convey our sanitary sewer all the way down to the St. Paul Pigzi Plant through their conveyance system, and TREAT experienced a similar peak of sanitary sewer discharge. There's a program that the council administers that was essentially resurrected with this storm event. They send out discharge notifications for excessive discharge, and we've got a variety of different notices that were included in your packet. Those all eventually lead to a couple sets of choices for the city. We can either accept an additional surcharge onto our sanitary sewer bill, which makes up the vast majority of the sanitary sewer cost that every resident pays. Or we can promise to do work on our system through infiltration mitigation work plan, equivalent to four years of that surcharge, at which point the surcharge goes away. We initially got a notice, especially for the meter number 127, that comes from the Minnehaha Creek trunk sanitary sewer line, where it was many millions of gallons over its expected peak during an inflow event, such that our total annual surcharge would have been $919,000 a year and a four-year work plan amount of over $3.5 million. That got us into some unique planning for, you know, trying to fit that into our capital plan, which you see evidence of here. But we're taking this off of your agenda for action tonight, and we'll come back in two weeks, likely to the consent agenda because that amount was cut into about a third. That amount easily fits.
That's the letter that we have.
That's the letter on the dais.
Received on the 7th of today, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
The Met Council looked closer into that meter and realized that the stage discharge relationship or the relationship between the height the meter was reading and the conceivable amount of flow that could go through the meter far exceeded the amount of downstream capacity in their trunk system. So they, they put pen to paper and came up with a new stage discharge relationship after some urging that significantly cut down that overage from about eight million gallons a day to two million. So we'll be back in two weeks with a much smaller work plan that doesn't quite tie our hands in the capital improvement plan like we expected it would.
Okay. Mantra Neil.
I want to highlight the urging part that, that Mr. Bittner just talked about because without some communication from our staff to their staff, we might not have received the $2 million discount. So it's worth their time.
So we thank you.
Well, not really, not really a discount. It sounds like what it actually is is a correction because of the, the limitations and the measurement of their.
And we are not the only community to receive this.
We are not.
Right.
That's correct. At the back of.
Do we have any questions that need to be answered tonight before we have it on the dais since it will be consent next time?
I'm really getting squeezed for time here tonight. I have two, I have two things. One, does this relate to the conversation we had with the IBM representative about a possible smart city project in the future?
Yes, good.
Okay. And then the second thing is, the, the way that you would absorb the extra cost would be through rates, and the sanitary sewer portion of the bill is already $56 or some, it's a very high amount per month in relation to the other charges, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
And that represents the annual treatment cost paid to Met Council, correct? So next time that resident calls me upset about the $56, it relates to the annual treatment cost, it's actually going to Met Council, is that correct?
Yeah, I, just to, we don't have a finance director here today. It's about 80% of the total cost. The maintenance of the system makes up the rest.
Okay.
Of our conveyance.
Did you say 80?
80.
Yeah, okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, yes, okay. Member Brendel.
Okay. So if we have another spring, I'll wait till you're done writing that down. If we have another spring like we had this year, and if we are going to have wetter years, is it likely that we are going to have more events like this?
Precipitation and runoff events?
Yes.
Assuredly, yes.
Okay. Is that the major contributor to INI? What's the major contributor to INI?
For our system, a lot of it has to do with the age of the system and the method of construction. There's a, there's a graphic later in the packet that describes all the many sources.
Yep.
Rings and castings degrade a lot quicker than a pipe. So, you know, keeping up and not letting, not falling behind in doing deferred maintenance on the sanitary rings and castings, intentionally, you know, tracking those type of points where there's potential leaks is a really good practice. We also have a lot of clay pipe. So a second or third ring suburb often has PVC pipe that came in 20 and 30 feet segments. Here we have clay, clay segments of pipe that are eight feet long, a lot more joints, a lot more potential for, for cracking and infiltration points. The house connections and the, and the service lines, when the sanitary sewers went in, sometimes builders help solve drainage issues by tying in foundation drains. So a lot of it has to do with the age and stock of the housing as well.
Okay.
Newer poured foundations with PVC connections or cast iron connections have a lot less susceptibility. So it's mostly system age, but then it triggers and fails during the big storm events, so.
And I think I can add one point to that, that we've seen different studies by communities that 60% of the system isn't even our own that's contributing to the INI. It's private pipes, private sewer services, those connections. So we're doing our best on that 40 to 50% of our public system, but the majority of it is on the residential, private side.
Okay. All right. And remember, part of what we do is we look at each street project as they determine what they're going to do is where have we had the most problems? Where can we do the best repair work underneath and the street at the same time? Any other comments?
We have, we have a large group of standalone projects as well that will improve INI infiltration. That's on the public side in the next, that's in our capital improvement plan.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion to table?
Would you like a motion to table?
Sure. To October 21st.
Okay. I move that we table to.
Second.
October 21st.
Okay. To October 21st.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Member Bennett. Let's move on to the residential redevelopment update.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You get to stand before us again.
Yes, thank you. This is a project of, of three departments, but because the engineering department is the newest to the table and one of the issues is, is a specific concern in drainage, we're the ones standing before you tonight. We undertook a process to, to do kind of a retrospective on this year's implementation of residential redevelopment permitting, inspection and enforcement, sitting down with the planning and the building departments and all the players who take a individual permit application through the application and inspect, or permit review process all the way out into the field in inspection and enforcement. One thing that, that we thought was, was really needed was kind of a definition of the service. Oftentimes in, with the amount of permit workload and the interface with builders and residents who are having issues, it's easy to forget, you know, what the ultimate service is because you're dealing with customers that are coming at a city process that wasn't necessarily designed, you know, with their ends in mind. So we propose a service or a definition of what the service is. And generally, the service, you know, it breaks down to core city functions, and we've, we've taken a first stab to kind of get a conversation going about, you know, what that service looks like. And it's generally for the public good and it boils down to public safety, sanitation, public health, making sure that all the utilities of a future building site are connected into the public systems in ways not unlike the last agenda topic, you know, are in the public good and that don't push problems off onto the public system, but also don't push problems off to neighbors, especially with the stormwater erosion and sediment control. So we, we proposed some of the, the service definitions and put the, the two customers that we work with, the builder and the homeowners, in context to the, the core services that we're trying to provide. So we're eager to get some feedback from both the council and the planning commission tomorrow night on this topic to, to see what you think of that. We also summarized the recent changes. We met with you sometime, I think in February in a work session to get, you know, what issues you were hearing the most from the public, what issues we should prioritize. Because it's, you know, it's rebuilding the car while it's on the interstate at 120 permits a year or more, if you consider the major remodeled projects as well. And we did address a lot of those, and we've summarized them in this report and recommendation. We also looked at, kind of proposing at the next steps and seeing where, at least from the staff side, where we saw future value in looking for, you know, the next steps for the process improvement, not just for the core services, but also for the customers that we serve. So I'll open it up to your discussion.
Mantra Neil, when I looked at this, it occurred to me because, again, we're talking about something here, but it also relates to the inspection department and, you know, obviously Ross and planning and, and planning commission. Is this a work session project, I think? Because we can start talking about this, but until we kind of sit down and realize what we can do that's reasonable for who we have here and what we want, how we want to prioritize these things and get some input from not only our employees but our planning commission, I just think it would be a better, better format for it. Does that make sense to you?
It, it does. In fact, they've done, that employee, employee group has done a work session already with the planning commission.
I figured they had.
That went quite, quite well. They had a lot of good, good rapport and good reports from that, from that meeting.
Sometimes, though, when you do that with your employee group and your commission and your council, you get, you start understanding the actual movement of paper and what happens and what, what's workable and what's not, and how we can prioritize it and what we actually have employees to do and what we don't have employees to do. So I think that's where I'm coming from on this. But if you disagree with that or the council does, I would certainly accept their comments.
If we were to schedule this for a work session, you can see your, your work session schedule is.
Yeah, 2015.
Yeah, it's probably that time period.
We have a break in the construction season soon, so it would be a good topic to broach between now and the beginning of the next. Well, it's going to get cold at some point and no, it's not going to stop. All right, so there you go. So time is of the essence.
It was a nice thought, though. I liked it.
It used to stop.
Yeah.
The, can you, can you walk me through the digital plan review? Because that looks like a pretty good enhancement.
Can you, are you the right guy for that? Can you, are you the right guy for that?
I know a little bit about it, unless you want to take it.
No.
No. There is plan review software scheduled to be purchased.
Right.
By the building inspection division of the fire department where they would intake, comment on permits and then submit required changes back to the builders all through an online email portal, rather than requiring two sets to be handed to the building department and then those two sets to be, you know, passed around the department, taking all those weights and uncertainty out of the process and streamlining it all through a single communication device.
And in fact, maybe Jennifer Benner can add a little bit more detail to that too, but Ross has captured the essential concept.
That sounds like the right use of technology, especially in this type of a process, which is, involves multiple departments and multiple players and anything else to add?
I think Ross did a great job of providing a layman's synopsis of the project. It is a fourth quarter project, so we don't plan to launch it imminently, but we're working fast and furious on it. If anyone would like to see a demo, please let our department know and we'd be happy to provide you with one.
So, okay.
If it is not scheduled for a work session until two thousand and fifteen, I will not be able to be a part of this discussion. So I would like to just...
I wasn't trying to exclude you by doing that.
And I'm not perceiving it as such. I'm just, I, initially when I saw that it was only scheduled for ten minutes, I put a question mark in my agenda because to me there's way more material than ten minutes worth of discussion. But I do want to say that I appreciate the organization of the document. I think it's some, well, I think it should be shared with the public. I think in addition to this body commenting on it and the, the records that we have of complaints being made or inquiries being made, I think the general public also should have a chance to discuss it and perhaps in advance, well, I think in advance of the work session. So that can be some of the information that's contemplated. I will say in looking at what are defined as ancillary services, perceived services without clear link to core services, particularly the category of enforcement of normative behavior, example, regulations, stop work escrow citations. I think that perhaps the definition of core service, the four categories, public safety, sanitation and public health, orderly land use and transportation, I think those are good categories and I would define them as core services too. But I think that there are some things that are described as normative behavior under ancillary service that really do go to core service as well. Because we regulate noise as a city beyond construction. We don't allow people, they have to have a permit for a loudspeaker for a party. They have, so the idea that we wouldn't have regulations of noise related to construction or that they would be defined as not a core city service but ancillary. I think depending what flows from those definitions of core service versus ancillary, I think we're, as a city, approaching limiting what really is a core service in most people's minds and what they think they're paying taxes for. Same thing with stop work. I think that goes to that relating to some things that are later in the document, this limit on what the city can and cannot enforce. And I think there's a huge need for public education, but I think there's also a need for understanding that it's because the city's power to enforce has the limitations that it has, that city code, plan review and inspections are even more important. Because the city can only use the tools that it has and when a project is beyond those tools or outside those tools, then it really makes something that may have started as a public matter a private dispute. And that's costly for residents. Courts are notorious for uncertain results, so it's not only costly for residents to have to pursue their rights in court, but it's also uncertain that they'll actually get any satisfaction. And I think that's where some of the concern among residents is coming from. And again, there's a need for education and understanding what the city's limitations are, but I think that needs to be understood at all levels. And hopefully we have rules that are clear enough and they're enforced clearly enough that there's a minimization. You can't regulate everything and you can't control everything, but can we minimize in a process that we regulate because of our legal status as a city? So again, looking at, hoping that that definition of ancillary service or that, and also tree protection, for instance. I think people move here from locales like Minneapolis where the boulevard trees are owned by the park department and they, they see trees as having a public status, whether or not they're actually owned by the city. And so some question, I know you all have wonderful discussion on what the public value is of trees. And peace of mind, you want to look at that spelling on page two?
I corrected it for the planning commission, sorry.
Okay. It's spelled correctly for a different definition.
For example, you would like to give me a piece of your mind, right?
No, spell check did not get that one. I think problems identified the, the certificate of occupancy and what, I know that that's kind of the last stop for a city. So again, if that's, people do perceive it as being the city's last ability to enforce something. If the city is going to say, no, that isn't as effective as you think it is, then I think all the steps before that have to be looked at a little differently. Enforcement of noise or work hours. I do note that Minneapolis requires a permit for weekend work, for work outside the hour. You can get a permit, which addresses a concern I think that other council members have raised about what happens to the home remodeler, the resident remodeling his or her own home or a small project. When you have a permit process, then all those reasons can be stated in the record. You're just saying these are the, and it avoids this dual system that we have right now where there are much tighter, better standards for complete demolitions and rebuild than there are for remodeling. Access to rear yards, there was something about policy review. That would again go into the plan review. If we've said, and that's on page three, if we've said you have to have access to your backyard on your own property, which I think is a sound, I think there's public purpose for that, then I think the plan review again becomes even more important. Is that element in there or not? Have they included enough detail an applicant to know? And you might want to make it clear on page four that that sprinkler requirement is not something that the city has stepped out there on a ledge to do itself. This is actually a matter of state law and I think the firefighters are solidly behind it, definitely perceived as a matter of public safety. So those are the comments that I have in the document if I'm not here to discuss it.
I appreciate that, thank you. Who knows, maybe there'll be a five o'clock work session that opens up in December and we can get in. But is that okay with you, Manager Neil, that we do it that way? I mean, we could all sit here, but I think it's, 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 it's a longer conversation than what I think we should have on the dais.
And I appreciate your forbearing my entering comments tonight.
Absolutely.
We'll organize it like that.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to table?
No.
No. Our D is our resolution number twenty fourteen one oh seven, final plat for seventy-one fifty-one York.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Before you is a final plat for the Yorktown Gardens project. That's the senior housing project in front of the Yorktown Continental on York Avenue. The, the final plat in front of you is the same as the preliminary plat. So with one, the one change is you recall as part of the preliminary plat approvals, park dedications fee were due at the time of release of the final plat, which is our typical standard. The applicant is requesting this evening that the park dedication be paid at the time of a building permit, which they anticipate in about a month or so, to help with their financing. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the resolution before you that approves the final plat along with that change to the park dedication requirement. And the applicant is here this evening if you have any questions in regard to the timing and their financing.
City Attorney Knutson, is there anything unusual with the request to pay that park dedication fee later? And does that have any concern to you?
It's not the most usual. The most, the most usual is at the paid time of final plat approval, but I have seen this done on numerous occasions in other places.
Okay. Okay, Member Brendon.
Thank you. Attorney Knutson, does the subdivision run with the land? In other words, were there to be a transaction in the next month? So if this resolution is approved this evening and the preliminary plat is approved without the payment of the park dedication fees, who's responsible if the land were to be sold in the next month?
The subdivision gets recorded, the resolution with that requirement gets recorded, so it runs with the property. It would not issue a building permit. It runs with the land.
So the subdivision does, but you're saying that this resolution would run with the land as well?
Because you record it with the plat.
It has, it has been recorded.
It's a covenant that runs with the subdivision.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move resolution number twenty fourteen dash one oh seven, final plat.
Second.
Okay. Does that call for roll call? What? Simple majority, yep. Anyone who's voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who's opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion, aye, sorry. Motion passes. Okay. And Human Rights and Relations Commission Bias Offense Response Plan. You had something you wanted to...
Thank you, Your Honor, I do. You know, you've received this presentation before. We had a work session on it, I believe, earlier this year. And you asked staff and the commission to go back and discuss proposed amendments and bring the plan back to you for a, for a review and approval. And we have completed that process. The, the red line version is, is in front of you this evening for an approval. There's only one edit that I would propose to make to what's in front of you tonight. And that is, in the red line version, in section one, on the third line down, the line says, "Police Department or other law enforcement investigating, investigatory agency of a substantiated event." We want to, the police department, and, and I agree with them, believe the insertion of that word at that point is very important to the functioning of this, the functioning of this proposal or this plan. And I have talked about that with representatives of the Human Rights and Relations Commission and I can say they're okay with that.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yes, can you restate that location again, please?
Third, third line, and I'm going to read it from this, from, "Police Department or other law enforcement investigatory agency of," change the A, change the word "and" to "a" and then insert the word substantiated event or incident which may constitute. The purpose of that provides the police department an initial opportunity to determine whether or not something really happened. Sometimes it doesn't and we've encountered that in just, just earlier this year with something that was potentially a bias-related, bias-related crime.
Okay, are there any other questions?
The only other point that I would make to you regarding the amendment is in section seven. And in section seven, this is, remember at the works, at the work session we had quite a lot of discussion around public property and how, and how this policy relates to public property not owned by the city. So most likely school districts, but it could be anybody. And the question was, do we want to, do we want to make someone go through this policy if they have an event or an incident on their property? Do we want to make them do it, even if they don't want to? And what this, what this section says is that we will bring that to their, to that, to their attention. We'll ask them if they want to do it, we'll ask them if they want us to do it. If they don't want to do it and they decline for us to do it, I'm going to bring that to your attention. I'm going to tell you that and then you can, you maintain the, the authority to direct it to be done if you believe that's what's in the best interest of the community. But we don't make it, we don't make it a mandate that it's going to be done whether they want it or not.
So the two alternates before us this evening are the italicized language on page two of the staff report and the material in red underlined.
And that's the one I'm, I'm, what's in the red line version is, I think, what I would recommend you go with.
You're, you're recommending the red line or you're recommending the italicized?
The red line.
Anything? Yes?
I have a couple of language concerns, much slighter than the ones that have just been addressed. And that is that in, in paragraph one or item one, the... Notify receipt of a substantiated event. The, the words are not lining up. The police department will notify the city manager and chair upon receipt of an event. They're actually receiving notice or information of an event, but not the event itself. And so that language, there's a, I'm open to anybody else resolving that, but that's just... And then in two below, we have put the alternate for singular and plural subjects, victim, victims. And I think we might want to follow that up with plural options for verbs, request parentheses s and victim does, does, do or duh, victims do victims in any event.
I, I don't, I don't see that as being necessary because you're following the first form through.
Okay.
So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but it'll just be more confusing, I think, for the reader.
I will happily agree with that one, but I do think that we...
So it's from, and the H R R C chair upon receipt, and then you want to know what they're receiving.
Exactly, they're not receiving the incident or event.
Receiving notice, notice of.
Notice of.
Notice of.
Of a substantiated. So the addition, the change would be deleting the word "and" and substituting notice of a substantiated.
Right.
Anything else? I do. And I'm trying to...
Member Brendon?
Yeah. This is a wording thing, let's see here. Although I don't think it's in the plan, so... Yes, it is, yes, it is. Okay. The final page of the plan is a list called a community resources network. And anywhere that is referred to, I think it should be called that. So in the plan under purposes, the final bullet under purposes would be to establish a community services network that can be activated as needed. Community resources network.
Yep.
So that it's called the same thing each time. Is that it? Just, let's see here. Okay, here it is. Under number one, together the Edina, the last sentence, together the Edina police chief, city manager and H R R C chair will develop the appropriate level of response, including any necessary public statements. I have trouble with that. The job of a commission is to advise the city council. And the formation of this plan is the advice from the commission. But I don't see the role of the H R R C chair as sitting with the city manager and the police chief to determine an action. I don't see that. So it concerns me because I think that person needs to be, needs to have more knowledge than I did when I was H R R C chair for a couple of terms. I wouldn't see myself as being capable of determining the appropriate level of, of response. So to, and, and I don't think when we interview commissioners, prospective commissioners, I don't think that we look for people who have expertise in areas. Now, sometimes, certainly, the commissioners who are here, some may indeed be experienced and trained conflict... Some may indeed be experienced and trained in conflict resolution and mediation. And that may be the case, but it is not always the case. So to have it in the plan itself concerns me. Members, other members, Brad?
I don't have a problem with that. I think it will become part of their duties to be part of this response plan, and they will be educated about that duty. And if they take the HRRC Chair person position, they'll know they have that duty to perform. So to me, it's the appropriate leadership position to, with, in conjunction with the police chief and city manager, figure out what the consensus response should be.
Member Bennett?
Well, then, the person would not be acting alone, obviously, working with the police chief and city manager. The only alternative I can see is to have the HRRC continue to act in its advisory role, but I'm wondering if that gives us the timeline that we're looking for. If we already have had the requirement of a lapse of time to make sure that something is substantiated, it can, I think, if you're then having the HRRC meet, discuss a response, tender a recommendation to the council, by then, you may have concerns in the community that have not been able to be addressed because of a lapse of time.
And that was the concern.
Yeah. So in order to have that flexibility, but also with those checks of having the three people on it, rather than just one, or just the commission, I am comfortable with the rationale behind it.
I understand, actually, Member Brindle's concern of being, having some experience in mediation. And you're right, we don't interview for that, Member Brindle. And I think the only reason I'm comfortable with it, once I started looking at it when you brought it up, is that it is, becomes a 2-1 vote, almost, because the chair is only one-third of the body that sits to discuss it. So in that case, I would be comfortable with it. If it were just two people, or the HRRC person alone, then I would agree with Member Brindle that we don't screen for that kind of skill set. And I'm trying to find this in the plan. I haven't yet found it in here. But making the public statement, I would look upon the Communications Department to work with the police chief and the city manager to formulate a public statement, so that the statement is clear and concise and consistent. Because that is, I mean, that goes viral, and you can't control where that goes. So that, for me, that part of it is also a concern. So I would want to limit the people who would be interviewed for a public statement, whether for printed or video.
Absolutely. And, you know, in my capacity as city manager, that would be a very quick call and be part of our process to make sure that we covered that responsibility professionally.
All right. And I, like I said, I can't point to where it is in here, but... And maybe it's not in the plan. I don't see it in the plan. Okay. It must be in the text prior to the plan. So, all right. I just wanted to be sure that... I mean, that requires some control, so. Anyway, those are my questions. Okay.
Mayor Protan, I'll move this with the change of substantiated. And also, there's two other small typos. On 3, the first bullet, second sentence after offense, there's an underscore.
Yep.
And on 8, the HRRC chair, after that, there's an underscore that needs to be removed. But with those revisions, I'll move this.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a resolution accepting various grants and donations. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So motion passes. And we will put on our website the list of donors. It was a very generous time for us, including a donation from the Cedars of Edina for the roundabout, to the engineering department. And a very generous donation from the Crime Prevention Fund for transportation services for that Great Edina Summer Playground program, so.
And lots of donations to the Art Center.
Yep, lots of donations to the Art Center. And they had actually a great exhibit and opening last week for anyone who attended, and some great art, and the winning pieces of art were fascinating. So I encourage anyone to go to the Art Center. Correspondents?
I have one. There was an advisory communication from Human Rights and Relations Commission. It relates to an event happening on the 2nd. We only have one council meeting left, so I would like to discuss putting this on the agenda for the next meeting, which...
They had two, so do you want to define which one you're talking about?
I'll move to put the NFL Team Name Change Resolution on the agenda for the next council meeting.
The mayor also asked for that as well. I just received a message from him, and... Because he had a couple of amendments he wanted to make to it.
All right. Well, then, I would also like to add... Do we have a second to that motion?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The other advisory communications from Human Rights and Relations is changing Columbus Day, or refocusing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, or Native. Is there some movement on this at the legislature? Did I read this here?
Well, Minneapolis already did this.
Okay. Thank you for...
And...
And Red Wing.
The cities of... Where have I got it here? I have a list. The cities of Minneapolis, Seattle, Berkeley, California have all made the change to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And Native Americans' Day is Denver, Colorado. So I think it would be good to look at that.
And it appears from the list given us in the staff report that Red Wing, Minnesota, has retitled it First Peoples' Day.
Okay. So would this be something that that day would then be honored at the meeting before? Because it's not something that we're going to not schedule meetings on that day or anything, is it?
No.
We don't recognize Columbus Day now.
I know. So...
We don't recognize all holidays now as meetings, as days when we wouldn't have meetings. So you could recognize it, and it just has that... That effect doesn't really have an effect in terms of how it impacts our meeting calendar.
Okay. How would it be recognized once we passed it as a city, though?
That we don't, we support retitling it in honor of the history behind it. To Indigenous Peoples', yeah.
And in our own calendars, that's what it would be called.
So we would still have a Columbus Day, and we would still have a... No, we would replace Columbus Day with this.
We don't have Columbus Day now.
I know. That's why I'm confused, I guess.
Well, Columbus Day's on my calendar. It's like the 2nd month.
It's a U.S. holiday, but we're saying locally.
And there's no mail, and, you know, it's that kind of a holiday.
Action by this body would not change the federal law?
Right.
Or the federal government handles it? It's a question of any...
It's just...
Internal calendar, any reference. But I think it does have an educational function, as well as a history correcting function. And support some movement forward on it for those reasons.
And then program, maybe we can have some programming that goes with it at some point, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't see it on the work plan tonight, so I was a little confused if it was going to have programming, if it was going to be added in any way.
No.
Well, I just wanted to know what the... I understand the intrinsic value of doing it, but I wondered, you know, if you do it, and then you don't honor it in any way, then...
Yeah.
What do you learn from it?
Yep. There is a resolution, and maybe annually, at that first meeting of October, we would recognize it.
Okay. Do you want it on the calendar?
Yes.
And will it be on the consent calendar for next month?
Sure.
Are you making a motion to that effect?
I am.
Okay.
I will second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to, is there any more correspondence in the petition other than what's on the dais, which is what I was trying to get to?
No.
There was a piece of correspondence that I think we got individually, and then also was in our packet regarding the noise that's generated from Coleman Stadium. It's a stadium without buildings.
We are addressing that. Staff, our health staff is working with school staff to investigate and address the issue.
Okay.
We've already responded to it.
Great.
Mm-hmm. Thanks for bringing it up. Aviation noise update. We have a meeting coming up...
Where are we? 20th, 22nd, or 24th?
Public meeting for noise input for NAC.
Which would be the Tuesday.
Tuesday, the...
Fourth Tuesday. The fourth Tuesday.
But isn't that the meeting, though, that we are now rescheduling?
Well, there's also a cities meeting.
Okay.
That's a cities meeting that Minneapolis is hosting this time.
So we're talking about the 28th, correct? Tuesday, the 28th?
Yes, I believe so.
That's the fourth Tuesday.
Okay, and I can update at the next meeting.
And it's at the, right, and it's at the MAC headquarters, and it starts at 7:00.
Those are evening meetings.
Right.
And that is an open comment period. People can register and indicate their desire to speak. But at all the meetings I've attended, the chair has also, or John Nelson, who usually presides over the meetings, has asked if there's any comment from anyone else in the audience, and it's always allowed. In addition, I do have a couple of pieces of information. And Manager Neil, do you have any update on any comment letters?
I do. I do not at this time. I'm expecting one, though.
Okay. Well, I'm going to recognize a piece of correspondence we received that was urging the city, directing the city, to withhold any funds that it could until noise was reduced. And I want to assure people that the airport, neither the Metropolitan Airports Commission nor the airport, are funded by state or local taxes. It's a self-funding entity.
Yep.
Through fees that air passengers pay, and also the airlines, and other entities using the airport. But it is not funded through tax dollars. However, I still welcome hearing from people and their concerns, but I want people to understand clearly that the regulation comes at a couple of other levels. And the regulators at those levels need to hear from residents, and that is the state legislature, which has some input as to the composition of the bodies, and also the statewide use of airport system. And I know we got an update from MAC Commissioner Rick King that made some reference to even expanding use of airports within the Twin Cities area. So I think that there, my sense from putting all of the events together is that people's comments and letters are having an impact. Again, we heard at the meeting organized by the Concord Neighborhood Association in May that there is negotiation, legislation, and litigation, and that the preferred way to approach this problem is negotiation. And I think that people are more eager to negotiate when they've been hearing from citizens. And then finally, letters to Congress, because Congress will be working on the next transportation bill. Starts this fall, or it's already started. It will, it's due in a year. And that's where testing for things like environmental impacts, the health impacts of accumulated air noise, RNAV, performance-based navigation, these are all things that Congress regulates and funds. And so it's very important that the congressional representatives and senators hear from residents as well.
And if you listen to public radio recently, talking about the fire in the Illinois off-site building and what it did, the interesting response from the FAA was that Gennev would be the solution to that. And that being able to track planes on tracks better would then allow other places like Farmington, which has taken over actually a lot of the western tracking for that Illinois station, that it would allow them to better do that job. So that was pretty interesting, so.
Well, in fact, there's been some discussion in literature and other places that to really realize, to realize full economy from PBN or RNAV, being a type of PBN, that actually, the number of air traffic control towers would be reduced.
Yeah. Now, there is one thing, I think, Manager Neil, that you and I talked about, because the city of Minneapolis has a new communications person when it comes to the airport that has sent out some pieces of information. And I know you've been contacting this person, because some of that information is, would be great to send out, too. And have we gotten permission yet to do that?
We do. Her name is Lauren Olson, and Councilmember Bennett and I have met with her on a couple of occasions. She's very bright, and she has this functional field is a major component of her job. We have asked if we could work with her and use the same information that she develops for the city, and they have okayed that. So when we have the opportunity to do that, we will.
And a little bit of background, she was the staff member for Councilmember Sandy Colvin Roy, who was president of the national organization that we joined last year, and long involved with it. And her actual department and job title is governmental relations.
Cool. Council comments, Member Sprague?
Thank you. Member Bennett and I attended the ARCA, the Greater Twin Cities, kind of a legislative listening session at a private home last night. And we heard about some needs for park programming for those with developmental disabilities, and had a conversation with Director Katry in the hallway, Member Bennett and I, about maybe trying to get together with some of the advocates. There's a great community ed program coming up on Southdale. And I don't have the exact details, but I know it's on the website. It's the Edina Historical Society is supporting it. Do you have any details on the time for that, Member Bennett?
I do not.
Okay, because it...
I'll find out Thursday morning.
Yeah. So it's, you can actually, you can sign up through community ed. And if my phone worked, I could, it's dead, I could tell you the date and the time. But it's coming up soon, and if you go to the website, you'll be able to check it out. It's one of the, someone who appeared on the PBS series that featured Southdale and went through its history will be presenting about the evolution of Southdale and so on. And then recently, I have been talking about, I know we're redoing PUD standards and looking at that to create more definite standards for redevelopment, have a little more control over the process and the outcomes. But I also think that the Planning Commission should look at some type of overlay district for Southdale. And I know Planner Teague and I had a conversation, and that's something that is on their radar as another potential tool. Is that correct? Okay. To get some more cohesive community standards into the development going on there that's going forward at such a furious pace.
Josh?
Yep.
I have the Southdale session at Edina Community Ed is Tuesday, October 21st, 10:30 to noon. 10:30 in the morning, ends at noon.
Thank you. And then the last thing is, we've talked before about kind of the urban design standards for some of our public projects, roundabouts and so on, and trying to come up with more community design standards. And I don't know where that fits into the Planning Commission's process, but we talked about that the last council session, and I would just want to bring that forward as well.
Okay. Thank you. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Two meetings to announce our presentations, and then just a couple of comments. The League of Women Voters this week is having a presentation on the Vision Edina. So a public presentation for people who would like to attend. Their meetings are always open to the public, and that will be at 10 o'clock at the Edina Senior Center. And then on Saturday, the League will hold its Saturday session, and that speaker will be Steve Elkins, a Met Councilmember who represents Edina. And he will be speaking on redevelopment and the comprehensive plan. And that is also at 10 o'clock in the community room in the upstairs at City Hall. So two meetings open to the public. And then I had the privilege to complete a cross-country drive from Los Angeles to Minneapolis over a two-week period, and was delighted to walk part of the urban... part of the urban trail system in Flagstaff, Arizona, the River Walk in Pueblo, Colorado, part of the trail system in Kearney, Nebraska, and Yanni Park, I think I have that pronunciation right, and also to visit the Ryman Gardens at Iowa State University. And so, will, or hope to, in future planning, be able to share some of the information that I saw. They were projects funded in different ways to solve different needs in the community, but largely accomplished in phases, and it was really delightful to see so much good public work being done in so many places.
Good. Member Brenda?
I have a few things. Tomorrow morning, I have I-494 Commission, Corridor Commission, and October is, oh, I should have given that to Jennifer, please, is carpool to month, carpool to work month. So in an effort to try to manage the volume of traffic on 494, 494 Commuter Services works with companies along the 494 corridor and tries to find ways to, for, for employees to carpool to work, find alternate ways to get to work, and help 494 function a little bit better. And this group has been extremely effective, and I, it's, it's like millions of cars, car hours on 494 that they have reduced. You can hardly tell the difference, unfortunately, with all of the other construction going on that ends up on 494, but, but this is, 494 Commuter Services is part of the Corridor Commission's work. The second thing is, I got a call from a resident, and she's called me a couple of times, but this time she called because she has been in pain, and she went to the doctor, and she actually, actually has bone chips in what I think might be her shoulder, and it's from a branch that came out of a tree in a neighbor's yard that hangs over her yard. And some of these trees and branches are large enough that if you realize it's coming down and you try and get out of the way, you can't get out of the way quickly enough, as happened to a woman in Eden Prairie, who you might recall was killed by a tree, because she couldn't get out of the way quickly enough. But the fact that this, and it's a large branch, she's got a picture of it, and the situation probably exists in a lot of different neighborhoods, might exist where a property is adjacent to a city park, you never know, but, but what, what can a resident do? There is a state law that says the resident can trim it with the neighbor's permission, and...
Don't need the neighbor's permission.
Don't need the permission if it's overhanging your property.
If it's overhanging your property, you can cut it off.
Ah, okay, well, I'll, I'll let her know. The part that, yeah. But, but she, she actually has spent thousands of dollars trimming trees that are infested with ants, that are on the neighbor's property, and the neighbor's property is large enough, this is a large lot, large enough that the trees are closer to her house than they are to his house. So anyway, looking at, when we look at the tree ordinance, let's take a look at dangerous trees. What, how to manage trees that are infested, if in fact we are going to have situations where people get hurt on their own property. Let's see here. There is a letter in our correspondence, a letter from a resident near Struckhauer Park that posts were placed, do you know anything about this? And the posts didn't look like they were vertical, and he was asking if they could be straightened up a little bit?
On Xerxes, yeah.
Yeah, on Xerxes, yes.
Yep, had to do with the Xerxes bump-out installation for getting cars in the proper lanes along Xerxes, so there was bump-outs constructed into, it's just a four-inch curb so drivers, snowplows wouldn't be able to see it, so they're retro reflective posts that are put on those bump-outs.
Evidently, they're not, they're, they're crooked?
They're, I drove through there a couple of times last couple of days. They're straight, but they are flexible, you know, if a subject hits them, they move, but they're...
Oh, I see. They move. Oh, okay.
Slightly, they're not...
Okay.
Blowing in the wind, but if a car hits them, they're gonna bend over.
All right, all right.
They look ridiculous, but that's another issue.
They're, they're what?
They look ridiculous.
Oh, they're, oh, they're part of Xerxes Avenue? Oh, they're not part of the Struckhauer Park area?
No. I had a similar conversation with him a little bit differently.
Oh, okay, all right, very good. You all, I'm sure, have been reading about Community Action of Minneapolis, and I want to assure you that the fiscal responsibility at Community Action of Southern Hennepin is well in hand. Community Actions of Southern Hennepin, otherwise known as CAPSH, is a multi-city board of the county, and I'm on it for Edina, and Bloomington is on it, there's a variety of, of cities on it, and I can't remember, it's like 15 or so people on the board, Edina Public, Val Burke is on it for Edina Public Schools, for, for example, and so, long story short, CAPSH, which is this agency, is handling the energy assistance requests from Minneapolis.
Lie-heat. It's all lie-heat money, the energy resistance.
Okay, and, and so they're going to be opening a couple satellite locations that are more convenient to that, to the parts of Minneapolis where these folks are. CAPSH is located near Knollwood in St. Louis Park, so they'll be opening a satellite in north, central, and southern Minneapolis, and near south Minneapolis. And, but anyway, CAPSH is taking the, taking over that workload so that, and that was one of the things I asked when, when CAPSH met as a board, and we started talking about this, was that I wanted to make sure that an agency was able to step in as quickly as possible, since we are getting into October and November, and people who need energy assistance need to be applying for it now, and, and so sure enough, CAPSH has been asked to take on that, so. But we have a new executive director, Scott Zemke, he's wonderful, he's very professional, and is well up to the task of doing this, so we're in good hands. That's all I got.
We also have something else to... Yeah, okay, Mary.
In Community Health Commission, Kathy Iverson is retiring.
Yes, they announced it last, tonight at the work session, there's an opening...
Yes.
For a community, the, the School Community Health Lia, it has a title, what, how does the title run?
No, the School Community Health Liaison was Janet Schenk.
Okay.
And that position is evidently open, and...
Along with Kathy Iverson.
But Kathy Iverson is Edina Chemical Health Awareness, and so that's two, that's two people.
Two important positions.
Two important positions.
Which ones?
So, we need to get that filled, with somebody just like her.
Okay. Just a reminder, we also have Saturday morning for anyone lives in the Valley View-Wooddale area, the general meeting for the planning session for that area, it starts at 8:00, it goes till noon, and it is to take place in the strip mall, there's an empty section there, Snuffy's will be providing breakfast. Did you want us to act on anything for, on the dius that, for 9B from the Heritage Preservation Board we had, or does that just automatically happen, Deb, the lack of attendance for three people?
Right.
Two people for three, it's just gonna happen? There, you didn't need an action from us, did you?
No.
Fine, it's a no, that's fine, that's what I assumed. And then just a note, this is that time of year where there are lawn signs for politicians out there, and apparently we have some missing, and that, you're breaking the law when you deface, or steal, or do anything to a lawn sign, and I think you need to know that. I know that when they get dumped off and they end up up here at the police station, so do you have a spot that they've been putting them lately?
We do, they typically keep them back by our dumpster.
Loading dock kind of area, that's what I thought. So if you're missing out there, if you're any politicians missing lawn signs, look at the back of the police station. Do we have any managers' comments?
I do, and, and again, a few of these are, are just reminders of some dates coming up. First of all, just remember that our first council meeting in November is Monday, to, to miss the election day, so it's Monday, November 3rd. On two, on Monday, October 20th, there are two events happening that I want to make sure are on your calendar, if you can make it. One is the employee recognition event, annual employee recognition event.
And that is when?
And that's, there's, there's two, there's two servings, I would say.
Right.
But it's generally from like 11:00 to 1:00 in that time period.
And the date on that?
Monday, October 20th. And if you, if you want to come to one of those, or, or both of them, you're, you're very welcome to, check in with Heather Branigan to RSVP.
And is that at Bremer where it usually is?
Yep, yep.
And I will not be at our Friday when we have to, what is it called, when we vote on the vote?
Canvas.
The Canvas.
Thank you. Oh, I like voting on the vote better, but the, I will be out of town that day, just to let you know.
Okay, we'll need a quorum of you on that day.
I know.
What day is it?
What's the date?
Friday, November 7th.
Four or five? Four.
Okay. You need four.
That, that same night, the, the evening of October 20th, we have a presentation, we've talked about this maybe once before, but a joint opportunity with the park board to hear the results of their, of their survey.
Yep.
And that's from Ron Vine, who, who did that work for them.
So that's on Monday, October 20th?
It's on Monday, October 20th.
And where will that meeting take place?
And we don't have the, the, the exact time and location pinned down yet, but it'll be a supper hour.
It's an evening meeting.
Yep, yep. Same day, October 20th.
Okay, so we'll look forward to an email from you on that?
Yes, yep. And final event is that December 5th is Friday evening, and that will be the dedication event for Bremer Field that night, so we'll have an event at the, at the new field, including the ice rink as well, and we want to have a pretty wide invitation list and welcome to that event. That's all I've got.
What's gonna be in there?
That'll be in the evening as well, yeah.
Okay, on our schedule, it says we're gonna finish at 9:50, and we are, 9:50.